Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of August 27, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
I'm here.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Oscar Anthony of St. Peter's Restoration Community Christian Ministries to offer the invocation. And Pastor, we're just so grateful for your investment in our community. Thank you so much for your service. I know you're reaching out to the neighborhoods. And Pastor actually was a former Ward One Councilmember, so thank you for that service. Following the invocation, Dylan Brar, who's a senior at Liberty High School, will lead us in the pledge. Dylan raised $30,000 for the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County through his inaugural charity golf tournament, which is called One Shot at a Time. And the proceeds will support after-school enrichment for underserved children throughout Kern County. Dylan has a 4.5 GPA. He plays for the Liberty Varsity Golf and Water Polo Teams. He's also in multiple clubs, including Student Leadership and Project Lead the Way. He, in his spare time, he plays the piano and guitar, and he's learning about the stock market. And he says it's going to always go up, right? Dylan's dream is to start a golf training program at the Boys and Girls Club, and he believes everyone should have access to playing that sport, regardless of their financial ability. We're so proud of you. And so at this time, Pastor, would you come and lead us? And would you please stand?
Father, we come thanking you for your sovereignty. We thank you for your command that we should pray and honor all leaders everywhere. And we come joyfully to pray for our city council, as well as the heads of this department, this city. We pray that, Lord, you would continue to bless them, give them wisdom, spirit of unity, that you continue to use their effort to bless this city with safety and health. Help us as a community be in agreement, oh Lord, with moral conviction to do the right thing. Help us to embrace righteousness. Continue to give our city council and city staff wisdom and unity, as well as protection. Bless our city, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And Dylan, if you'd just stay there. Dylan, thank you so much for your efforts. It's my honor to be able to present this certificate to you in honor of your outstanding service to Bakersfield and Kern County, in recognition of your heart for our community raising $30,000 for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County through your nonprofit organization, One Shot at a Time, and in recognition of your leadership and continued commitment to pursuing academic excellence. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words and introduce your family.
I want to say thank you to the mayor and to all the council members for having me. And thank you all for recognizing One Shot at a Time.
What about you?
Oh, and here's my mom, Raji, and here's my dad, Babu. And I can't do, couldn't have done any of this without them. Thank you.
All right, let's do a photo with that. Thank you.
Come on up.
All right, he challenges each of you to raise $30,000. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons. And as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this, a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation declaring Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Bakersfield
Today, I have with me Claudia Guerrero, who is the vice president of Gigi the Warrior, and mom of Gigi, who was diagnosed with leukemia in 2019. She's made it, Gigi since then, has made it her life's mission to help local children. She was unable to join us here today. Childhood cancer is one of the leading causes of death for children in the U.S. Each year, more than 14,000 children between the ages of birth and 19 are diagnosed with cancer. Every three minutes, a family hears the devastating words that their child has been diagnosed with cancer. I'd like to issue this following proclamation. Whereas cancer knows no boundaries affecting all ethnic and socioeconomic groups, and whereas increased awareness and research will help educate the public on early diagnosis and provide readily accessible clinical care to patients in need, and whereas dedicated health professionals, agencies, and organizations have made it their mission to help children with cancer and provide educational, emotional, and financial support to their families, and whereas children deserve the chance to dream big, discover new interests, and live their absolute potential while fighting this disease. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in our city, and urge all residents to join our city in reaffirming our commitment to fighting childhood cancer. And it's my honor to present this on behalf of Gigi to you, and please offer some words. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Go, councilmembers, and attendees for being here. My name is Claudia Guerrero, and I am just a speaker today. I am a mother of a child who had cancer. And so this is personal. I never imagined that one day I would learn more about chemotherapy than about cartoons, or that I know, or that I would know the sound of a heart monitor better than the sound of my child's laughter when you hear the words. Your child has cancer. Your world stops. Time freezes, and you feel like you can't breathe, and suddenly you're living a life that you've never asked for. You're filled with hospital visits, scans, medications, side effects, and fear. Cancer doesn't care how old your child is. It doesn't care about birthdays, bedtimes, or baseball games. It starts like a thief, and it steals everything, your normals, your life, routines, even hope if you let it. But you fight because you're a mom, a parent, a sibling, or a friend, because giving up is not an option. You learn to celebrate these little things, like what they can eat, a small bite of food, when their counts go up, when their hair starts growing back. You hold your breath at every scan, every test, every late-night fever, and through it all, you learn the kind of strength that you didn't know existed. My child is a warrior. Every child fighting cancer is a warrior. But here's the truth, that most people do not realize, only 4% of U.S. federal cancer research funding goes to childhood cancer. Just 4% is that all our kids are worth. So I speak today not just as a mom, but as a voice for every family that is still in the trenches, for the ones grieving, like the mother of Genevieve, who lost her battle this year on July 2. Cancer may have taken a piece of our lives, but it would never have take our will to fight. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. You may see a gold ribbon and think nothing of it, but for us, it means everything. Gold is for our children. Gold is for strength, and gold is for hope. So please, don't just hear this and move on. Share, advocate, donate, and remember, help make the gold loud, stronger than statistics and brighter than fear, because no parent should ever hear the words. There's nothing more that we can do. Thank you.
Claudia, thank you so much for sharing your pain with us and for sharing your courage also, and being willing to be that advocate, the voice for those who don't have any voice. And we just thank Gigi also for her perseverance in spreading the word, and we are just grateful that we can have people like you who are raising the awareness.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, family. Gigi is not here tonight for a good reason. She's working on her FFA project, and I think the fair is coming up, so we send our best to her. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are received at different times. Depending on the item, I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statements when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received three speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Rod. Jews?
Guys.
Guys.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself, and you'll probably have to raise the mic. You're a little bit taller.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It's an honor to be here. I speak in opposition to the renaming of H Street. Margaret Thatcher once said, "The problem with socialism is that you eventually run out of other people's money." How is it that we can have two votes, almost two votes, offer time for the public to comment, offer to help business, to pay for transition costs, without knowing what their costs are? The Vice Mayor, you were quoted on 23rd saying, "My goal is to make sure that we have funds available to support small businesses that would need help in making the transition." How do we know what that is? The vote has already been taken, it's gone to the Planning Commission. That makes no sense. I don't understand how that works, and I'm confused at that. I've talked to a number of business owners who have no idea what's going on. So are we saying, "Let's just go decide this matter, then bring it to the people, and then have the people pay for it"? Is that what we're saying? Because that's not, as I said in the article, that's a bad business decision. I want to thank the four councilmembers who voted against this thing, starting off with Councilman Zach. This is, this is not good. I'm out in the community. They are not happy at all about this. I started a petition. Now, there are four petitions out there. Now, what kind of, how, why are we doing business this way? Why not have the open, at the beginning, have people's comments, and then bring this in? Now, the vote's already been taken, it's in the Planning Commission, and I ran into a few people who actually worked on this thing, and they're not happy with this thing, but they can't say anything because they work for the city. This is a bad decision. I, I'm not against renaming Caesar Chavez as a street. You can name another place a new street or whatever, but taking the middle of Bakersfield and doing that, to me, is almost like saying, "I'm going to put Black Lives Matter right down the middle of Bakersfield."
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Well, since my quote's been quoted here, I will respond first. The process begins at the city council, and as we clarified in our last city council meeting, the research now begins. So staff is going to be working with business owners who are on H Street. This research is going to be done. We were giving direction to the staff, and I can have our city manager clarify for you as well, so if that's helpful to you.
Mr. Clegg.
I think, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, that is correct, is that the motion included an effort to finalize the fiscal analysis, to also start community engagement, and we anticipate that there will be a process that is fairly involved in, you know, talking to individual business owners and being able to bring that information, both for the Planning Commission as well as the city council.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Rod.
Good evening, and thank you to the mayor, the city council, for letting me speak. My name is Rod Geis. I'm a 47-year petroleum engineer, and I love Bakersfield. It's a great city. It's a little hot, and apparently the downtown area needs continual revitalization. However, it's the best oil and gas town I've ever been in, and one of the greatest blessings that could ever happen to Bakersfield is the restart of oil and gas permitting, but that's another thing. I wanted to talk about the last council meeting. With, to my shame, it was the first council meeting I've ever been to, and perhaps it was a bad example. Maybe I shouldn't judge all council meetings by the last one. However, I wanted to give you guys some constructive criticism and hopefully some thoughts going forward. There was a lot of emotional dialogue and virtue signaling and references to race, ethnicity, and persecution from the public. There were virtue signaling from the council and from the public. There were even comments on neo-Nazism and white supremism, and that was all very inciting and emotional, but none of it was relevant to the question of whether we should give the Dolores Ouerter Center $300,000 in grants. Councilman Bashir Tosh, I hope I said your name correctly, sir. Sorry if I butchered it. He made, he had the most relevant comments on the question. I did not speak, but would have, after the public comments were over and after the council spoke, had we been given another opportunity, so I make my comments tonight. I would have recommended that the board, that the council vote no on this, because the center did not need the money by their own admission. Had they built elsewhere, it would have been less expensive, and maybe they wouldn't have needed a grant. If 18 grants have already been done to date, would another $300,000 make any difference? If 18 grants have been done, why do we still need to revitalize? Anyway, what are we missing here? Where is the beef? Where is the cost-benefit analysis? Basically, why don't we go downtown? Everything we need is in the West. Safety is an issue sometimes. Sometimes people won't feel safe downtown.
Mr. Geis, your time is up. You can make a couple more closing remarks, please.
Thank you. And there are places in the downtown area that are kind of an eyesore, but before we spend money on this and spend money to like reimburse businesses for renaming streets and their costs and that, let's ask ourselves, what's the cost-benefit analysis of this? Are we spending good money after bad money? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Terri Maxwell.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a chance to speak. I'm here because I want to clarify a story that I told last time it was in front of you. I talked about how, when I had my restaurant, that I had, I could not get my alley redone. I want to let you know that was long before I was ever on the city council. The city council person that I had at that time ignored all of my requests to have that alley redone. I was concerned for the city, because that alley had so many crevices in it. We had two elderly patrons that walked out into that alley and fell. The city's lucky that they didn't sue them, because I had already been to the city council, and I had written several letters requesting it. They could have easily gotten a lot of money out of this city. I was concerned about that. Now, I, I, once I got on the city council, I didn't have to worry about it anymore, because I happened to have another city councilman, almost the day after I had been in front of the city council, come into my restaurant. I had him go out in the alley. He looked at it the very next day that alley got fixed, long before I was ever on the council. So I'm here to request from the mayor and from the Vice Mayor, and for the, from the Ward Two city councilman, who impugned my character while I was on the city council, to write me a letter of apology. He impugned my time on the council, because he said, "I must have been inept, because I was on the council and I couldn't get something like that done." At no time when I was on the city council did I do anything that was self-serving. That's a template that you all should live up to. If you are on there to do things for yourself, for your businesses, or your friends, you're up there for the wrong reason, and I would accept that apology, either written or verbal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Madam Clerk, any other public speakers for that category?
That was our final public speaker for non-agenda items.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on appointments, item 6A or B, or items listed under consent calendar, item 7, your time to speak is now. Each speaker is given a two-minute time limit. Each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on public hearing, item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding appointments, items 6A or B, or items listed under consent calendar, item 7?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card for agenda items from Terri Maxwell regarding item 7G1.
Okay. Mr. Maxwell?
Thank you. My name is Terri Maxwell, and I'm speaking on this because this is the grand jury's evaluation of the taking of H Street and making it a single lane in each direction. I see that in the evaluation that they had, they pointed out a few things that were wrong with even considering doing something like this, and I have one in addition. They were not impressed with the company that was hired in order to do an evaluation of this particular project, because that company was biased in a positive sense, that they, they only see that as a one-solution question, and that is that you need to make H Street one lane in each direction with bicycle lanes, that this somehow is going to solve problems that don't, at this point, exist. Now, the other thing that we should probably look at more intently is vehicle traffic. How is this going to affect, where is your, where was your evaluation of the impact, vehicle impact? Have you ever been to BHS, which sits on H Street, in the morning or in the afternoon? It is a madhouse, and you're going to make that into only one lane going by BHS? Have you lost your minds? That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Now, the other thing I can tell you is, when I was on the city council, and Ken, you and Bob will remember, when I was advocating that we turn downtown into one-way streets, and that was thrown out, mostly because I was the one that suggested it, because most of the cities in Kern County, in California, had advocated one-way streets. Most major cities have one-way streets in the downtown area, but because I was the one that suggested it, it was, of course, not considered. But one of the key things that they, they pointed to was the fire chief said, "If H Street was a one-way street headed north with three lanes, that somehow that would affect their, their ability to get to an emergency." When I asked him, "How long would it take you out of your way?", it was seconds. But here you are now, you're going to turn H Street into a one-way, both ways? How is that going to affect that fire department? How are they going to effectively get to an emergency if it's only one lane? It's completely blocked up, and now you've put all of the, all of the traffic over on Chester Avenue, so that they're not going to be able to use that one either. I think you better rethink this.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Mayor Go, that was our only speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A, four appointments to the 2025-26 Youth Commission, Wards Three and Five, regular and alternate members, with terms set to expire July 2026. We received applications for appointment from Saisha Guladi, Caitlin Hentges, Ella Pepper, Jasmine Bawa, Tanav Duda Penny, Jaslyn Tran, and Gunit Kor.
Thank you. These appointments are by councilmember, therefore, I'm going to call on our council members to share their regular and alternate youth commission member appointments. Councilmember Coleman, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Ella Pepper, a senior at Liberty High School, as my regular appointee, and Jasmine Bajwa, a student at Independence High School, as the alternate.
Thank you. And Councilmember Weir.
I, I'm asking if we can do another survey into Ward Three, because I don't have anybody from Ward Three in, in my list. Is that possible?
Yes, Councilmember Weir, that's possible. We can do a new recruitment for additional applicants.
Just for Ward Three?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now, Vice Mayor, if you can make the motion.
A motion to approve Councilmember Coleman's appointments to the Youth Commission.
You have the motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Gonzalez absent.
Thank you, and thank you to Ella and Jasmine for your willingness to serve, and to all the applicants, thank you also for your interest. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6B, League of California Cities, 2025 Annual Conference Appointment of Voting Delegates.
City Manager Clegg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. As is the case each year, leading up to the League of Cities Conference, we have opportunity to delegate someone on behalf of the City of Bakersfield to vote on resolutions that come forward at that meeting, and it is typically, the appointment process typically comes from nominations of the council from the deus.
I wanted to confirm Councilmember Arias.
to delegate someone on behalf of the City of Bakersfield to vote on resolutions that come forward at that meeting. And it is typically, the appointment process typically comes from nominations of the council from the dais.
I wanted to confirm, Councilmember Adias, you are attending? Yes, okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Councilmember Adias as our voting delegate and Mayor Karen Go as our alternate delegate, please.
You can be there. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor, if I could just ask a question?
Yes.
I know we are having staff turnover, who typically support in this capacity. Do we have a new staff member who's going to be helping supporting the council?
We do. Thank you, Councilmember. We actually have had Juan Aradia, who's been working with Anthony on all things legislative and grants for, I guess, maybe eight months now, and so he's well-prepared to support council.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Gonzalez absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that historically, we haven't had conflicts with council and the League of Cities. And it has been, over the years, beneficial for me to go to the League of Cities, especially when I was a newer council member to learn stuff, what's going on, how other cities solve similar problems to what we have. And so it's not a referral, but just to comment that, you know, perhaps next year we won't have the conflict because, you know, we missed the first day, and if you drive down after council, then you can get the second day, but it doesn't really work. So would appreciate that process. Thank you.
All right. You have a motion? You, did you already, you already voted. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar, items seven A through seven I for approval.
Is there anyone who wishes to pull an item? Recuse? Vice Mayor?
Hi.
Owens?
Are you? I'm sorry, I haven't.
Oh, okay. Is your buzzer not working? Oh, okay, go ahead. Councilmember Weir?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull for item seven E4 for separate consideration.
Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve consent calendar with the exception of item seven E4.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor Go, we seem to have an issue. I'm going to go ahead and conduct a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Khor?
Yes.
Councilmember Adias?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez is absent. Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshertosh?
Yes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Gonzalez absent.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Weir, seven E4.
Yes, maybe our Vice Mayor could make a motion for that item.
Oh. Motion to approve item seven E4.
And you don't wish to make a comment? You have a motion? Please cast your votes. If it's not working, do we need to take a roll call on this one, too?
Yes, Mayor Go, we need to do a roll call vote. Oh, it opened.
Oh, it's up now. Oh. Can you give us direction again because I saw it come up on the screens? Would you like to do roll call, or is the system working for everyone?
The system worked, Mayor. Motion is approved with Councilmember Gonzalez absent and Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar, public hearings, item, I apologize, hearings, item nine A. Appeal hearing to consider traffic impact fees imposed on Planet Fitness located at 11425 Stockdale Highway. Planet Fitness is requesting to appeal the decision to impose traffic impact fees at their new location in the Village at River Oaks Center.
Thank you. Our next item is an appeal hearing involving traffic impact fees, as the city clerk said. This is not a traditional public hearing and therefore will be conducted in a slightly different format. City staff and the appellant will each be allowed 15 minutes to speak. Once both sides have spoken and have gone through the rebuttal, the general public will be allowed 20 minutes to give comment. Madam Clerk, you've already read the public hearing item, so at this time, appeal hearing item nine A is open. And now, Mr. Clegg, would you like to have the city representative speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to, to our Public Works Director, Zach Meyer.
Madam Clerk, please start the 15-minute clock.
Good evening. Hold on.
Why don't you stop the clock for a minute? Are you set?
Yeah, I'm set. I apologize. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Zach Meyer, Public Works Director. So for the hearing tonight, it is a traffic impact fee appeal called Traffic Impact Fee TIF for short at the Planet Fitness on the southwest corner of Stockdale Highway and Buena Vista Road. This slide gives an aerial of the location of what's there already existing and where the Planet Fitness will be located. So the appeal by Planet, the appeal by Planet Fitness is to challenge the current traffic impact fee which is being imposed on their building. They allege that the TIF amount should be lower because they are a standalone building and not part of a shopping center. The city's position is the applicant is part of a shopping center and not a standalone building as it has all the following. We view shopping centers that have multiple uses, shared points of entry, shared utility access, sewer.
We're going to need to stop for a minute. I just don't know whether Councilmember Weir is still here. So we're just going to need to check. I'm sorry. We need to make sure that all council members are present for the entire hearing so that it can be fair and we can hear all points of view. So we just need to know whether he's left or just stepped somewhere else. And Mr. Meyer, if you could just start again, please. And colleagues, if for any reason you need to leave the dais, just let me know and we'll stop. Go ahead, Mr. Meyer.
Okay. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Zach Meyer, Public Works Director. So the hearing item tonight is a traffic impact fee appeal by Planet Fitness. This Planet Fitness is located at the southwest corner of Buena Vista Road and Stockdale Highway, as you could see in the image on the screen, where the building is in relation to the rest of the area. So the appeal by Planet Fitness is they're challenging the traffic impact fee. We call that TIF for short. That's currently being imposed on their building. Planet Fitness alleges that the TIF amount should be lower because they are a standalone building and not part of a shopping center. So the city's position is we believe the applicant is part of a shopping center and is not a standalone building as it has all the following. We view shopping centers that have multiple uses, shared points of entry, shared utility access for sewer, storm drain, electrical, and water, and shared common areas that you typically see in shopping centers for landscaping and shared parking. So some more background. What are TIFs? How are they calculated? And how were the applicant's TIFs calculated? So Chapter 15.84 of the Munich Code defines transportation impact fees. Any person who applies to the city for the issuance of a building permit to make an improvement to land or for one of the uses which is specified in the current resolution adopting the transportation impact fee schedule and which will generate or attract additional traffic shall be required to pay transportation impact fee in a manner and amount set forth in this chapter provided that the land development activity is consistent with the designations of the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan. So here is the formula, and I like to highlight three variables. The first variable is, as you could see on the first bullet, is the building size. We take the square footage of the building size and it's at a per thousand square foot rate. Next, we have the average daily trips per thousand square feet. This is called the ADT. This is the variable that's, in my opinion, in question. And the last variable where it says rate, moving forward in this presentation, I want to refer to that rate as the fee. So this fee, if you look to the bottom bullet, it's a trip rate fees are based on the adopted fee schedule for Phase Four and Resolution 84-09. So again, these three variables, the building size, the ADT, and the fee. So for the fee, this comes from our adopted resolution, Phase Four. And this is a non-core area. So for the retail, commercial, shopping center, it had a range between 50,000 and 99,999 square feet. So we use a fee of $167 for the purpose of the formula. So this slide shows the evolution of where we are now with the proposed ADT. So first, the first row shows the shopping center size of 73,800 square feet. We used the ADT of 79. Moving down to the next row, the developer requested a new fee for the whole shopping center. So using the developer's engineers' calculations, we agreed to an ADT of 75.5. Through another evolution, as more of the land began to be developed and what's currently remaining, the shopping center size reduced to 62,284 square feet. The ADT calculation was again updated per the developer's engineers' calculations, and it went up to 80.72. And if you look on the third row to the far right, we have a column that says Planet Fitness calculation. Using this 80.72 ADT, we are calculating a traffic impact fee of $340,000 roughly for Planet Fitness. Planet Fitness then requested that staff looks at another edition of the ITE, the 11th edition, where this later edition had a shopping center definition that did not include a grocery store, which fits the model of the shopping center. So this lowered the ADT from 80.72 back down to 67.52. So again, if you look in the bottom right corner of the slide, you'll see using these numbers, the square footage of the building is 25,257, ADT of 67.52, and using the fee per the adopted resolution of $167, we're landing at a traffic impact fee of $284,793. So moving beyond that, the city did agree to use that lower rate. However, the applicant believes that the TIF reduction should be based on a standalone building citing Bakersfield Municipal Code 15.84.050. When more than one land use is proposed within the same structure, for example, in an office as part of an industrial complex, each land use type will be calculated separately and the total of the various uses will be assessed. Staff's belief is the land use is the same for the entire shopping center, and the applicant's building is not a standalone building or multi-use structure. So Section 15.84.050 does not apply to this case. So this is again another aerial of where the Planet Fitness is going to be located. This map shows five arrows on the map where that shows shared points of access. So, you know, people going to the shopping center can access this from five different locations. There's shared area for parking. There will be shared areas for landscaping. So again, it's staff's opinion and belief that the Planet Fitness is part of a shopping center and not a standalone building. This is another example where building permit was approved back in 2020 for another Planet Fitness at Panama and Ash. Again, we use the same methodology for this, for this traffic impact fee calculation. It was the same applicant, roughly the same building size of around 25,000 square feet. Based on the total shopping center size, the fee and the resolution still landed on $167, and the ADT was used with 79 trips per 1,000 square feet. So using, so this is a very similar case to the one that's being here tonight. And we get a total TIF of $335,827, and this was paid with no protest. So in staff's belief, this is what we view as a standalone building. This is a 24-hour fitness, same type of building use at 4302 Gosford Road. This is a standalone gym. Building size comparable, 23,000 square feet. However, you notice that the ADT is significantly lower at 33 versus the 67 we currently are with the Planet Fitness. And because the total square footage is smaller per the adopted fee resolution, this is only $110, as it's between 10,000 and 50,000 square feet. So this total was $87,000. So there's a, for a standalone gym, there's a lower fee for the traffic impact fee of a similar building size. But again, this is a standalone building. As you could see in the picture, there's no other buildings, and this is not a shared shopping center. So in conclusion, city imposes TIF based on the adopted fee schedule resolution. Treating the applicant as a standalone building is inaccurate and will have unintended consequences such as special treatment towards the applicant. We don't want other applicants to view we treated one differently than the other. We could potentially see current tenants at the Village requesting TIF refunds, and there could be other retroactive and prospective consequences. So staff has two options laid out for city council. Option one, deny applicant's appeal challenging its building TIF calculation and concluding the building is part of a shopping center. Option one would be staff's recommendation. And option two is to approve applicant's appeal challenging its building TIF calculation and concluding the building is a standalone building. That concludes the presentation. I do have other staff, both in land development and public works, that could answer any questions and provide any other detail or information if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Clegg, do you wish to add anything?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll call on the appellant representative to come forward. And when he's ready, Madam Clerk, if you would start the 15-minute clock, please. And when he's ready, Madam Clerk, if you would start the 15-minute clock, please. Here.
I'd ask for the presentation to be handed out, please. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, Russell Johnson, Common Sense Consulting, on behalf of the appellant. And with me this evening as well is the appellant, Josiah Garland, and Bob Swanson with Swanson Engineering. We just want to thank that as you look from staff's presentation, you see there's a willingness of staff to work with the appellant. So you can see that there's been this working back and forth. However, because of the difference of opinion, we're here this evening, and you will see that what's happening is that the appellant, in the letter he referenced from his attorney that he submitted, you saw his reasons for his appeal. We think that there's more constructive ways to deal with this, and we appreciate staff allowing the appellant and letting him know of his opportunity to relieve himself of the protest hearing, because we think that's helpful in getting an item to a potential resolution that we think is helpful for everyone, whether it be the appellant or future developers in the community. So we want to appreciate everyone. First, if you go to the second slide, why are we here? The appellant is appealing the interpretation and implementation of the ordinance as it's related to traffic impact fees. The appellant has argued, as a reference in the letter from the attorney, that it's interpreted and implemented incorrectly, charging a higher fee to fitness centers and a lower fee to other uses. Seeking a fee that is clear and fair, the appellant reviewed the ordinance and believes it's being misapplied, and we've got local folks like Bob here agree with some of those traffic interpretations. I will point out, the appellant is looking at developing for other Planet Fitnesses in the community. He's basically saying to Bakersfield, "I enjoy coming to Bakersfield. I enjoy investing here. I'm risking a lot of capital." So on the first submittal that was referenced by staff, you will see that he did not protest. As he looked into the application of the fee, there was a different take on it, and that's why you see the protest today that you did not see before. And that goes with a lot when you're risking a lot, and you're putting a lot out there, and you're investing in a community. He saw that, hey, we think there should be another way that this should be done. So with this, we're asking for the council to utilize that protest provision, review this, and potentially find a resolution. So where TIF calculations commonly determine is from the Journal of the Institute of Transportation and Engineers Manual. We included a photo of that in the slide deck for your reference. We also included a reference to the City of Bakersfield Municipal Code. The administrator shall be guided in the selection of a comparable type report. We also included a reference to the City of Bakersfield Municipal Code. The administrator shall be guided in the selection of a comparable type by the report titled Title Generation and Information Report, Institution of Transportation and Engineers' Latest Edition. So...
Hey, Russ.
Yeah.
I just want you to know, the court reporter is over there, and so she's taking down everything that you say, so we just need to go a little bit slower so she can get everything. Thank you.
Fair point, sorry. Apologize. Thank you. So the appellant's argument is that the fee is being misapplied because they're not treating the uses as they should be in the manual. And the appellant's argument is that the uses should be treated differently, and that the city is misapplying them. So the fitness centers pay more under the city's implementation of the ordinance than other uses. If the fees were assessed equitably based on use and the traffic manual, fitness centers would pay a significantly lower fee. And other businesses using the city's method potentially get a reduction. So in looking in your pocket, you will see an example for the Stockdale and Buena Vista example. Appreciate Mr. Swanson for preparing this. If you look at this in the green, you will see that the green is what the applicant is proposing should be used, which is a rate charging a fee of 165,342. And the blue is what the city is charging, showing a higher fee of 284,794. I mean, getting older, I can't read the writing. I need to get closer here. That should be a difference of 119,452. But what you'll also see in this example is reductions for other uses. So in essence, it could be argued, the city's methodology charges one fee higher on one use, and then on the other uses, it's charging a lower fee. Our argument is, and the appellant's argument is, that it should be relying on the manual and the use that's been identified in the manual. Fitness center pays 175,886 more in fees if it were an ITE calculation. As currently implemented, the gas station pays 260,47 less in fees than required. A fast food restaurant pays 128,955 less in fees. And ultimately, the argument is that one use should not be subsidizing other uses. So we're here tonight thinking that we think that there's a better way to resolve this. We're asking that this refer this discussion to a council policy committee with the intent to clarify the fees and their implementation. Let the committee review the ordinance and implementation of the manual, and let the committee determine how it should be implemented and refer it back to the council for final adoption. And then apply the ordinance as it's written. One business should not be subsidizing another when other uses remain unchanged. So with that, we will conclude our presentation. We know that there probably may be some questions or some thoughts, but simple request, let's refer this to committee and see if we can find a way to implement the ordinance that is fair and clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, this city, would you wish to provide rebuttal statements? You have five minutes if you wish to do that in support of the city's recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no further comments.
Thank you. Now is the time for the general public to give comments. You may ask questions during your comment, but they won't be addressed until the appeal hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal comments, give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Each person will have two minutes to speak, 20 minutes total. Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in the public? Seeing none, I'll close the appeal hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask staff, just be back up. I want to thank the applicant for the really beautiful projects you do here in Bakersfield. I happen to live very near this particular Planet Fitness. They've done an excellent job of building out a really nice facility. It's not the first one. The Panama and Ash, I go by that frequently. Really good-looking projects. It's very well received by the community. So I want to thank you for your projects in Bakersfield. I wanted to ask staff, I had an opportunity to do a little bit of research, but I'm not an engineer, so some of that stuff is a little bit beyond me. But we're not the only community in California that applies TIF the way that we do it, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I looked at this, and it was a little bit of grief to me, but I did have an opportunity to get through it. And it seems to me like there may be some room to do something different, but I don't know that that satisfies the threshold here tonight. So I'm prepared to make a referral regarding this issue. Is it appropriate for me to make the referral now?
Motion?
Yes.
If I may, councilmember...
Well, I'm sorry. I'd like to make the referral before I make a motion.
Okay.
Is that all right? She's looking at me, so she's not sure.
Yeah, I believe councilmember, so long as we also have direction on the action tonight, we can also entertain a referral. We do need direction on the action, but a referral could precede that as well.
All right, so I'm going to make the referral first. All right, so I would like to make a referral to the Housing and Community Development Committee for city staff to provide an overview on how traffic impact fees are determined, what is the status on updating the city's TIF program, and whether alternative methods exist in assessing traffic impact fees on shopping centers. I know it can be confusing, but I'd like some review of that, because that would be my referral. And then I would make the motion to deny the appeal as it's written, but allow us to have further discussion at committee meetings. Is that clear enough, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. Anything further?
I have nothing further, Mayor. Thank you for entertaining me.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand. So the motion is to deny the appeal?
Yes, the motion is to deny the appeal, but there is a referral to have further discussion about how we address TIFs in shopping centers in the future.
So the motion is to pay what the city's saying at this point, but future projects, we're going to look at the program.
Yeah, I don't know what the timing exactly is going to be on that, but yeah, we're going to look at how we apply TIF for shopping centers to be sure that it's fair, and to have some dialogue about how that can be done and what other communities are doing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that for this project, the motion is to deny the appeal.
For this project, to deny this appeal, the fees will stand as they are.
Okay.
And we'll have more discussion. The applicant will be noticed, the public will be noticed, and we have committee meeting to discuss that.
Thank you. And then I've made previous referrals regarding our traffic impact fee program. Does this go along with that? Or there's been talks of, well, we can't really change them without an EIR, we need a nexus, and where's this go, really?
City Manager Clegg, and then City Attorney, or either... City Manager Clegg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I will ask the city attorney to chime in if I get anything wrong here. But first, let me just clarify that staff's interpretation of the referral and the motion are consistent with council's dialogue, that this affects this particular action now, but the referral could affect future applicants. Of course, that would be pending some change of practice or policy that would have a certain point in time where we say going forward now, the rules change, but it could affect future projects, yes. I think, Councilmember Smith, to how we apply specific interpretations of, let's say, Section 15 of the MUNI Code, some of those could change without necessarily changing every aspect of our TIF calculations. So some of that review could include some changes to the municipal code or interpretation thereof, but I think changing what fee basis we have, that would require, of course, an update of the TIF program. To answer your question about whether this is consistent, I do think it's good timing. We're thick in looking at the projects that would affect our future TIF fees. Of course, that is a process that takes some time, but I think we can weave this review into the review of the rest of our TIF program, and at the same time, look at some of the policy issues that, again, may be just municipal code, specific language, that could be updated independent of the full TIF rate structure itself. Would you add anything, City Attorney?
Thank you, City Manager Clegg. I would only indicate that, again, 15.84 of the MUNI Code, which is the section of the chapter under which the appellant is before you tonight, that is specifically entitled transportation impact fee. So I'm reiterating to a certain extent what Councilmember Clegg has said, that when this does go to committee, and I believe Councilmember Smith, your referral is absolutely in line with Councilmember Coleman's, that when that committee looks at the transportation impact fee program and where it goes in the future, and overlays that with what policy changes need to be made, or the council may want to consider, part of that discussion is going to have to be, if I change a policy, do I then need to... What effect does it have on the TIF? Do I need to change the nexus document? And again, I'm not, I don't know what the council may be considering, so that discussion is a bit premature tonight, which is why it needs to go to a committee level. But 15.84 is specifically the transportation impact fee. So I would suggest that, at least initially, my thoughts are, anything that changes 15.84 is going to have to have a new transportation impact fee study as well as the nexus document. But again, I don't know what other policy considerations you and your colleagues have in mind. Does that make it clear as mud?
I guess my initial thought process is, the arguments we hear tonight is different ways to calculate commercial shopping centers, and in the end, does then that affect our overall TIF base, I mean, our estimated funding from TIF?
My gut, Councilmember Smith, would say yes.
And if it does affect that, then that kicks in, the nexus study.
That is correct. But again, not really going down that rabbit hole and having a broader discussion. My initial reaction would be to say to you, yes, that then that would affect the nexus document, and then I think that's what the city was getting at, that then those future ramifications, right, on the viability and the applicability of that nexus document, and what exposure to risk it may, exposure of risk it has on the city if you change it, has to be discussed in committee.
Thank you. Not my word, and I'm in favor of however direction he wants to go. We've talked about TIF for quite some time now, and it continues to cause grief in the community in different areas, and the sooner, the better that we address it and begin to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. On this particular item, I received some information about a recent court case in Sheets versus El Dorado County that I believe is relevant to this particular topic. Nearly identical. I did not have enough lead time to be able to dive in, and I was just curious to know if the city attorney was aware of this particular case to see if it was relevant to this discussion.
Mayor, Councilmember Arias, according to my deputy city attorney, that Sheets case is offshoot from the Nolan-Dolan, I would say trilogy or prodigy case. And again, not having it here in front of me, I would tell you that, again, the Nolan-Dolan analysis basically says that there must be a connection, there must be a nexus between the fee that is imposed, and that is the nexus document. And I think Sheets reaffirms that Nolan-Dolan analysis. I am not aware that the Sheets case specifically goes to identical facts that you have in front of you today. Now, the Sheets case may, again, I haven't read it, it doesn't come to mind as I'm sitting here. I don't know if perhaps whatever city was in the Sheets matter, if they had a different policy implication on standalone shopping centers. Again, that is very possible, as long as that city's Nolan-Dolan nexus document supported the applicability of that fee.
Got it, thank you. And I mean, in my very quick review of the summary of that case, it goes beyond just the essential nexus, but also discusses rough proportionality of the proportion... the essential nexus, but also discusses rough proportionality of the proportion of the fees applied to the particular project. And I think that that also deserves some additional analysis as it relates to this particular case. So I would support the referral from councilmember, from the 5th District. But also, I would like to ask a question of the applicant as well, because if there is a denial of the appeal tonight, what does that do for any next steps after, you know, should this council deny the appeal? Is there an additional opportunity down the road when we, if we change the TIF calculations for them to bring this back before this body?
So I wanted clarification through the mayor, councilman Arias. It's important to point out that the appellant has already paid the fee that the city has requested, but he paid it under protest. So the fee has been paid per the city's calculation, which the appellant is protesting, which his reasons were laid out as stipulated. A great example is the letter that his attorney submitted, right? Our proposal would be, instead of denying the appeal this evening, lay it in abeyance until the council makes the policy decision within committee, and then it comes from committee and comes to council. That would be our preference.
Thank you, sir.
We're at your mercy. It's your ordinance, your appeal hearing, so thank you.
And I appreciate that comment. I think that that certainly is an option of this council to continue those conversations while we hash out in committee, you know, the traffic impact fees schedule, the way that we calculate it, so that it wouldn't preclude this particular request.
Thank you, councilmember Arias. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify my referral, and I think it's inappropriate to enjoin any previous referrals made by councilmember Smith, that we have a comprehensive review of this process and how it all comes together. And I'll get back to my original motion. I'll leave my original motion stand. I think we need to close the door on this chapter. If we make changes in the future, the applicant will benefit from that, but I don't think we should leave it open. I think that we've established that for the sake of this discussion, the applicant is not a standalone shopping center. He's in existing shopping centers as we define it. If we decide to make changes in the future to those rates, then any applicants at that time will enjoy those benefits. My motion is, as I stated it.
Thank you, councilmember, thank you, councilmember Coleman. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Did they, did they repeat the motion?
Okay. Can we repeat the motion? It's, Madam City...
Mayor?
Yes.
My understanding is, is if, the motion is to deny the appeal in its most simplest form, is to deny the appeal. And again, the city attorney's office would recommend that councilmember Coleman's comment is taken seriously. We need to put a pin in this, and 15.84 does not allow this matter to be, it can be continued, but even 15.84 does not, does not contemplate a continuance or a referral to a committee to allow a committee of three to decide how to do this. So I think it is appropriate, again, to put a pin in it, and the motion is to deny the appeal. And from there, councilmember Coleman and councilmember Smith have that joint referral to the committee.
You have referral? You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with councilmember Arias voting no and councilmember Gonzalez absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
At this point, I don't see any request to speak. It's, no. We are fortunate in our community, in our city, to have some very dedicated employees, and we've had one for 40 years. David Ante, who has been a building maintainer in our general services department, is retiring after 40 years. That's a long, long time. Today at lunch, we had a celebration. Director Meyer was there with me, and so many wonderful comments were made about Mr. Ante, just overwhelming praise. We got to present him with various awards, but what a dedicated man. And he concluded by saying the following, "Being a city employee is like being an ambassador." And tonight, we just applaud David and thank him so much for his wonderful service to our city for 40 years. And with that, we stand adjourned at 6:31.